Sure, the only guy from Seaside is still talking.
Right on.
Everybody's trained. Everybody's trained down here to right on time. Okay. I will reopen the fourth episode of our Dune Management Public Hearing. For those of you who have not been to the previous three, I will read the rules. And then we'll have a blank it out, sorry. Denise Lofman is going to take the place of Jeff today and do our staff presentation for us. So we'll get to that as soon as I read the rules. If you would like to speak, please place your name and address in one of the sign-in sheets at the door or being circulated. Check the box confirming your interest to speak or not. I go through all the lists anyhow. You will be given three minutes to speak by our new technology here at the discretion of the mayor and city council. The time limit is critical to make sure that all persons can be heard. However, you may submit unlimited written testimony provided it is sent to the city by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Groups or their representatives will be given, not be given, extra time to speak. So representatives from those organizations should consider this in their presentations and divide speaking responsibilities. Individuals not be permitted to cede time to other individuals. Individuals will be permitted to speak once per public hearing session, although the mayor and city council reserve the right to allow individuals to repeat. And also, at the end of the time when you folks get your chance to speak, the council may have questions. As noted, again, I will repeat, public com-- written public comment will be closed as of business, 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 1st. You may send those, public comment, now written public comment, either through email, through dick@ci-cannon-beach.or.us, or to the City Hall Peel Box 368 Cannon Beach, Oregon Just to follow up, I use the time clock, I use the sign-in sheet, and we will start with the, I believe there's two folks who are representing. And then we'll go from the top of the list down. If you do not wish to speak, just say pass, that's no problem. I will go through the list a second time after everybody has had a chance to speak. There we go. Denise?
Thank you. So Jeff is driving all of his earthly goods across the country to move to Cannon Beach, fully move to Cannon Beach, so that's why I'm standing in for him today. So I'm just going to give a little overview about the four dune management plan and what the, all are the four documents that make up the entire plan in its entirety. The first would be the Allen Report, which was authored by Dr. Jonathan Allen of Dogami. And it is the scientific basis for the FMP, which is the four dune management plan itself, which is a policy document that the Planning Commission completed last year and is recommended to city council. And then the third piece are comprehensive plan amendments, which will then line up with the four dune management plan, and then zoning ordinances and municipal code updates. So as the council is working on this process and updating the FMP, the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments are subject to certain criteria, including the municipal code, Section 1786-070A, applicable policies in the comprehensive plan, as well as statewide planning goals, especially Goal 18, beaches and dunes. Oh, that's right, he added these sections in. So these Jeff added, and so the document I have in front of me is not the same. And what he wanted to highlight here was the movement of sand to the north, and the amount of sand that's been moving in the littoral cell over time. And it is particularly, it moves more from the south to the north versus north to south. And you can see that in this graph, the round circle with the red and yellow at the bottom actually indicates that the greater force moving from the south to the north. And this gives an example of how much sand is moving over time. In the Cannon, in the Chapman Point area, there's been about 300,000 cubic feet of accumulated sand, and so that's like 10,000 of those double dump trucks. That's 500 per year, or 10 of those dump trucks moving up there per week. And there we get back to criteria. We'll move on to the municipal code section, which states that before an amendment to the text of the ordinance codified in this title is approved, findings will be made that the following criteria are satisfied. The amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the amendment will not adversely affect the ability of the city to satisfy land and water use needs. So the comprehensive plan policies, the different parts of the plan discuss sand dune construction, four dune management policies, and remedial dune grading. The comprehensive plan policies specifically address the management areas where four dune grading is allowed, the four dune management policies and remedial dune grading. The statewide planning goals, especially in Goal 18, include language that says to conserve, protect, and where appropriate, develop, and where appropriate, restore the resources and benefits of coastal beach and dune areas, and to reduce the hazard to human life and property from natural or man-made induced actions associated with these areas. And now we get into the policy and procedural questions that council will be looking at as you begin your deliberations. And you, as you move forward into that, you have two different paths that Jeff thought you could move forward on. And one would be looking at the documents and kind of going through the recommended FMP, comprehensive plan amendments and zoning ordinance amendments themselves, and updating those. Or you could look at it from the topic-based perspective, utilizing the topics that are listed here. And so the first is grading for views. And this language comes from the Planning Commission addendum to the city council, and it states the Planning Commission recommends that the city council carefully consider whether to allow four dune grading for views at all, and that you adopt the accompanying four dune management plan only to the extent that the council decides to allow such grading There's also a question regarding vegetation, and the types of vegetation that the city will plant if four dune, when four dune grading occurs. The next is seasonality. This is language that's taken from the FMP and the Cannon Beach Municipal Code. And seasonality, in terms of when dune grading will be allowed, is also linked to vegetation based on when the plants, when you plant them, and they will be able to kind of take off and thrive. Wildlife, which was a topic that came up quite a bit at the Planning Commission, specifically around razor clams, but also other wildlife as well. And slope, DLCD and their guidance recommends a slope of 25 to 33 percent, and that's what the Planning Commission also approved in the recommended plan. And beach access came up during the Planning Commission process, and the Planning Commission determined the question was not relevant to what they were discussing. And if private parties are interested in created, creating additional beach access, they could create a proposal and work with the city and state through the appropriate And then this is the Cannon Beach Municipal Code for permitting, and in terms of the types of permitting that would be required for four dune grading. And this is additional language. And so for mowing, currently mowing is allowed with a city permit, and the Planning Commission recommended not allowing mowing. So it would be a topic city council may want to address. And then property values, the Planning Commission discussed the topic, but no amendments were made regarding that topic specifically. And then just so everyone in the audience is aware, all of the documents from the hearings and the science workshop are all available online on the city's website. You can go to their homepage and click on the current topics tab. And then, once you click on that, you are able to access the four dune materials. It says four dune management plan documents, and all of them are there through today. I was on there today, and it's updated to today. Oh, and there's the list. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just so everybody's on the same page, this is the, it's not the final public hearing, but I would kind of like it to be. On the 7th, the city council will be doing a field trip and a site visit at 3:00 PM. And that is a chance for us to go out and explore what we've been talking about. On the 7th, and that's at 3:00, and then later that evening, the council will hold the fifth public hearing. But I'm asking that we try and curtail that a little bit, because I hope to have a lot of discussion within the council, because that's when we will then move for considerations and deliberation, I should say, because I think there's going to be a lot of it. So I will jump right in and ask if Denise, did you want to start tonight? Diana, I'm sorry. Too many names around here.
Diana Turner, 3524 Northeast Clickitat Street, Portland, Oregon, 97212. So, tonight I want to clarify a couple of things. First off, the Friends of the Dunes is asking for no more dune grading for views, views only. We understand that there will be times when remedial grading is needed. We recognize this grading as a necessary compromise, like, can we say it together, European beech grass, American beech grass, and all the native plants we have in our dune ecosystem. So for the gentleman who is concerned about sand blowing onto his foundation, yes, the city does have and should have a process to help you take care of that. We only oppose the unnecessary grading of our state-owned lands to give a tiny percentage of people a better view of the ocean from inside their homes. That's it. We are asking for no more dune grading for views. Not a catchy slogan, I realize, but a reasonable policy. There's been a lot of talk about safety and access. I agree, these are really important issues, but they cannot be addressed in this process. This process is only to discuss how our state-owned dunes can be graded, nothing else. And this process of looking at dune grading for views started five long years ago. So if beach safety and access are genuine concerns, it needs to be a separate process of investigation and testimony back with the Planning Commission. The discussion of reimagining the dunes with only native plants and a snowy plover sanctuary is also a separate discussion, which again, needs to start back at the Planning Commission, if sincere. Please don't be distracted by these side conversations that have no legitimate place in this process about whether or not to allow dune grading for views. Another area for clarification, Mr. Morgan characterized the PC amendment, asking you to consider whether to continue to allow dune grading for views as, quote, "simply a directive to do your jobs." Really? How often do you get an amendment from PC asking you to simply do your jobs? I'm going to quote Mr. Kabaisman here, and this was during the last PC meeting when this was discussed. And PC was trying to figure out how to give you this option, or this imperative, to look at the no dune grading option. Mr. Kabaisman said, "You could include in your recommendation a notation, something to the effect, 'This is the best we could come up with, but we think that the whole question as to whether grading is allowed should be reconsidered.'" That's why you got that amendment. It was not a directive to do your job. It was a directive to look at the big issue, and the reason that everyone spent five years looking at this. So again, Mr. Morgan also said that he heard from someone at Crest that PC was asked numerous times over the course of 13 hearings. Oh, I'm running out of time. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay, Bruce, did you want to?
No, pass.
Your pass? Then anybody who thinks they're representing a group, anybody else, I should say? No? Okay, we'll go straight to the list. Dave Sund.
Hi, my name's Dave Sund. I reside at Ecola Inn, Peel Box 515, Cannon Beach. I'm here to address you on behalf of Jeanette Stevens and myself, the Sundin Stevens families, and about 7,000 to 8,000 customers that we have in our motel and inn, that have been coming here for multi-generations. They come for predominantly two reasons, the view, the view, the view of the ocean and the view of Haystack Rock. They don't come here for a view of any dunes. They come here for easy access to the beach. Those are two simple things. Everything that I've heard on every one of these meetings that I've come from, from every special interest group, is they come to Cannon Beach for a view, and access to the beach, those two fundamental things. And that's not even what this meeting is about. This meeting, my understanding, is about can we grade dunes? And what is the process to do that? Because currently, we cannot do that. We put dunes in place because of FEMA and lower insurance rates. The science behind all of that in 1977 was valid to date and revalidated with this latest go-around with the scientists. So everything works to grow these dunes. But like one gentleman said, how much is enough? How big does the dune want to be? We are dynamically opposed to any dune, because the dunes are not natural for here. And I would invite you to look at this book by this gentleman. It's a pictorial view of Cannon Beach at 1955, and why he moved here, for the same two reasons. The only thing that has not been addressed here scientifically is the return on the investment for doing the dunes. There is an ROI to say, hey, are we actually paying cheaper insurance for it? I've never seen any data on what the original cost for that was, the delta between those two insurance things, what it costs to implement those dunes, and the annual maintenance fees that go around it. Because I honestly think, from listening to everything and watching and knowing what we pay for insurance at Ecola Inn, that I think we're paying a heck of a lot more money to put in place a storm surge, a 100-year storm surge protection process that's going to cost more than if you just paid the extra insurance for it. I honestly believe that, and I have never seen the data, the financial data. And you guys need to look at that. Because our community is based on the tourist industry, whether we like it or not. Everybody from Portland who comes down here and buys a home, or stays in a motel, it's all for those two reasons. It's not for dunes, it's not for surge protection. So we, as a community, need to nurture and make grow those two fundamental things. Those are the most important things in our lives. That's what puts bread on our tables. And when you look at Oregon, and you look at the postcards and people who come and have talked to me outside of Oregon, the first thing they talk about is Haystack Rock, Cannon Beach. That's what you need to protect.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Horning, 808 26th Avenue, Seaside, Oregon, as Horning Geosciences. I just wanted to describe a few things about our past dune grading. In the past, we have relocated sand onto the west face of the dunes and made the dunes wider as a result, then done it again and made it even wider. So it started as a dune about 50 feet away from the four dune, or the lawn for Breakers Point, is now 300 feet away, and all the new dune growth is located in the western one half of that. As a result, the eastern one half has pretty much starved of new sand inundation. So it's no longer technically an active four dune. It's a conditionally stabilized four dune, with local wild plants slowly moving their way in. But in the past, we proposed creating, accelerating the process of soil formation to help the plants colonize and take over, and bring in some of these flowering plants that are harder and harder to find because they've been crowded out by European beech grass. So that is one thing that might happen in the future, depending on how the report allows us to grade the dunes. I'm pretty confident that this will happen. I've studied a lot of the four dune development in Clasip County farther to the north, and you can see the development of soils from the composting of beech grasses. It takes several years for thick duff to start compacting down, and eventually, you'll get to a point where it can hold enough moisture, that the seeds that sprout the conditionally stable four dune community, strawberries, dune tansy, and goldenrod, for example, gives a chance to introduce a vanishing ecosystem back into the, into the community. We've also done tests on beech grass survival, and we've had 18, if we plant on 18 to 24 inches with clumps rather than isolated combs of beech grass, we have survival rates of 95 percent. And we proved this up with the assistance of Ryan Marbartle, and it's in the record in the city's files. And we've also had times where we've created adaptive grading methods that prevent the inundation of wind-blown sand soon after planting, where neighbors have expressed concern that it's possible that new sand liberated by the grading process might blow in. So we staged our grading into two phases, where the final phase was left ungraded so that it could act as a barrier to stop the sand from coming in. So we've always been successful with our dune grading. We've never had complaints, and that we've always been able to produce a grading program that delivers on the goals. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Good evening, members of the council. Fred Gast, I'm at 2132 Southwest Montgomery, Portland, 97201. We've had a strong connection to Cannon Beach for our lives, really. My first trip to Cannon Beach was in 1969. I was a little younger than I am today. At that point, I was very interested in building sand castles, which eventually led to a career in home building and neighborhood development. So I've always had a strong connection to this place. We became a member of the community five years ago, and we spend about 30 percent of our time here. Blessed to have that ability to do so. My profession allowed me to be a stakeholder in many code rewrites. Stakeholders included business professionals, citizens, professionals, technical people. The goal was always as it is in front of you, which is to balance competing interests. That is probably the most difficult thing any community faces, because we all have different points of view, as I'm sure you've heard for night after night. The goal in balancing these different views is ultimately protect the number-one value in any city, and that is sense of community. Sense of community is really what makes this place, or any place worth being in, special. I think, in having been in many processes before that are potentially divisive, the most important thing for you folks, and I believe all of us as part of this process, is to not eliminate an option for discussion based on merits. Eliminating view protection is a divisive course of action. Instead, having a process, perhaps one more bolstered than the one we have today, but a process that puts the burden on the applicant to demonstrate the science in details of what a grading option should be, and why it should be, is the best option. Procluding an option to make an argument is not an inclusive one. Procluding discussion is not something that builds community. And I think that the best option for the city and for all of its residents in the name of creating community is to leave option, leave option, open the option for discussion on specific detailed plans for what those grades should be. Thank you so much.
Okay, I've got a second here. Those of you who are new to this, as our high technology is, it takes a minute for those efficient folks who speak too short. Lali, you're up next.
Well, I had a very prepared talk.
Name and address first.
Oh, sorry. Lali Champion, Peel Box 614, Cannon Beach. Now I get to start. I had a very prepared situation here, because I know I've got the timer there. But in listening to what's gone before, and having attended the other meeting with the science, the one thing I have not heard, and perhaps it's not relevant to many, but I hear about residents and sand around foundations, and tourists, and views, and rights. I don't hear anything about the basic protection of why we love it here. I think that too often, that is missing, and I think we make decisions, and many decisions have been made since the 60s, through, up until the 80s, when they put actual implements into design, and about it to that, through that and through development. However, I think we need to take a longer look. The fact that where we've allowed so many things to happen on different coasts and along here, all of this is changing, and I'm just wondering how much we're looking at that. The homes that keep getting destroyed by hurricanes every year along the east coast, they're now saying they're going to stop those codes if they can rebuild. I'm just saying, if we keep allowing development to control what we love most, and making that the priority, I think we're missing a big change in what's happening in our environment, and within the reason that we all come here and love it. And I hate to see this turn into a situation where we say we're stewards, but aren't we? That is my question. How are we looking at this as being stewards for the beach itself, for Haystack Rock, and for those dunes who some people say were implemented, but continue to grow, and the sand that's distributed along the way continues to change? How are we looking at the natural process in view of what's happening over the residential, the commercial, and always making sure that the tourist is happy? I think we need to take a broader look, and that's what I'm asking. And I know that's going to screw up your timer, Sam, so sorry about that.
We're fine.
But again, I do want everybody to ask, are we doing this as stewards for this area? Are we doing it for commercial? And I think that's an honest question that needs to be addressed, morally and philosophically.
Thank you. Okay, in a second, it'll be Frank. Pass? Edgar Stone? Edgar Stone?
Can I give you folks a picture?
Okay. Name an address.
Yes, my name is Ed Stone. My address is 4540 Northwest Malheur Avenue in Portland. I'm the owner of 402 North Breakers Point Court here in Cannon Beach. And this situation to me is very, very personal. You know, I'm not a scientist, but I, I live in Cannon Beach, and I've owned a home in Cannon Beach for 37 years. I'm an original owner in Cannon Beach, or excuse me, in, at Breakers Point. And the pictures that I've shown you there, that top picture was taken shortly after we occupied our unit in Breakers Point. And as you can see, from our upstairs porch, we had a beautiful view of this lovely beach in Cannon Beach. And I can remember our girls running up and down the beach when they were little kids. We were able to step out and take a look at them on the, on the beach and put a towel over the deck when we wanted them to come in for lunch. It's personal to me. The bottom picture there is what that looks like right now. I took that picture just a couple of weeks ago. And you can see the, the consequences of this northern movement of sand, it's had a greatly more proportional effect on the people north of Ecola Creek. Now, I remember after a city council meeting, talking to the mayor one time, and I understand that you grew up in Cannon Beach and you, you grew up in this area here, and, and you've experienced this dune out here like when I was, when we bought our property and when our kids played here. And the things I love about Cannon Beach is, I love to walk on the beach. I used to run a lot on the beach. I'd run from Chapman Point all the way down to the very end of Cannon Beach, down there at the end of Logan Lane. And, and I would look both ways. I would look at the beach and the sand, and I would look up on the, in the neighborhoods. I enjoy looking at those beautiful homes in Chapman Point. I, some people don't think Breakers Point's very pretty, but I, I enjoy looking at my, our project up there. I like looking at, at the Whale Cove, and I like looking at the backs of the hotels and some of the newer homes along the coast, all the way down there. And if we had a change in, in the way the wind blows around here, and we had sand accumulating like it's accumulating in front of Breakers Point and along Chapman Point there, if it was in front of some houses in the presidential area, if all of a sudden we had 30 feet, 40 feet, 50 feet of sand, what would that look like? And, and what would that do to the view that people who come to Cannon Beach and walk the beaches and want to see the homes along the coastline here that are beautiful and interesting? When I used to run down there to the end of the town, I would get up there on Logan Lane, and I'd walk along the front, fronts of these houses along the coast. And, and they're beautiful, and I enjoyed those kinds of things. And I just hope that, that you'll understand that this is personal to a lot of people like me.
Thank you. Jeff Harrison?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Harrison, P.O. Box 742, Cannon Beach. I like to put grasses to bed. We now know from Dr. Hacker that they only account for 10 percent of dune height and width. Changing grasses here is pointless, and it's simply a diversion to justify grading for view. We're still hearing the emotionally and negatively charged terms invasive and non-native. So here's what the experts are actually saying. Yesterday, I called Mike Cipra, Executive Director of the Friends of the Dunes in Humboldt County, California. He confirmed that their situation and goals are very different from ours. Their land is an open dune on a spit between a bay and an ocean in the Pacific. They don't have a town to protect. They have one building, a nature center, and it's about 2,000 feet away from the foredune. Our buildings are 50 to 300 feet away. I asked Mike to comment on Andrea Pickhart with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in California. He said he would defer to anything, Andrea said. So what did Ms. Pickhart say? Specifically about Cannon Beach, she said, "With infrastructure directly behind the foredune, you probably want to stick with European beech grass." And by the way, that's from page four of your FMP notes handout that I picked up in the lobby. Next up, Denise Loftman, Crest, who said of Cannon Beach, "As someone who works in restoration of habitats, I encourage the use of native plants almost all the time. But it has to make sense for the situation. In this case, I personally believe continuing to exclusively use EBG is the most protective option." What about OPRD? In 2016, OPRD denied a permit to grade for views requested by Breakers Point because they pitched native grasses as an experiment. OPRD only approved the request when BP replaced native grasses with EBG as the grass to be used. Moving on to Orca, and I quote, "Orca is in favor of the continued use of EBG to stabilize dunes in front of urban areas. A necessary compromise with invasives for the sake of the built environment. We do not think that the American beech grass or the use of native plants is appropriate in urbanized areas, as the result would simply be sand drifting onto other nearby properties." I've heard grading proponents also cite safety as a reason to grade our state-owned dunes. I was curious about this, so I went to the police station yesterday and spoke to Chief Shermerhorn and Admin Assistant Laura Yokoyama. I asked them if the dunes were a safety issue. They both had a puzzled look on their faces and said, "There have been no dune-related accidents in the seven years Chief Shermerhorn has been here." Think about the suggestions you're hearing in this process and evaluate how genuine you think they are. A plover habitat in a town, changing grasses, lowered dunes with lessened protection, these are all disingenuous efforts with one goal: grade the dunes down for view. It's time to take a stand. What's more important, protecting our town or preserving its beauty, or guaranteeing views to a few? Thank you very much for your continued focus on this topic.
Right on time. Sherry Kilpatrick?
Hi, my name is Sherry Kilpatrick. My address is 16277 Southwest 130th Terrace, Number 39 in Portland, Oregon. And I'm here because I love Cannon Beach. I've been here and been a resident of Oregon my entire life, and so has my parents and my grandparents. So we've been here a long time, and we know what it has looked like, and I'd like to see it preserved and be able to be maintained as it has been. I'm concerned about the grasses because in this article that was published by the Oregon Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, it's a special paper, 49, I think you've probably already read it. It says here, "Because of the variability and the forces that both sustain and erode beaches and dunes on the Oregon coast, and our uncertainty and changes that will likely affect the beach over longer time scales, 10 to 30 years, an adaptive management approach based on the sound, knowledge of beach and dune processes guided by systematic monitoring and evaluation of the system as a whole is essential." I hate to think what will happen if we don't do some kind of a plan and put a, a process in place to manage the sand dunes over a long period of time. If nothing is done, what will we have? A great wall of Cannon Beach? It's already starting to become one, and that's what I ask you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, are you back there? Is he? Time for the advertisement.
Great. Many of you have already taken a tour of the city hall. We have a possible referral for a city hall project coming up, possibly in May of 2020. And there's two things happening. One is that we are putting together a group of folks to look at the information that we've been using to base our decisions. We want to make sure that the conclusions are valid, that the data is valid, and we actually want to start with whether or not there's a need for the city hall. So that committee is being asked to go ahead and review the scope and review the needs. So we will, all you have to do is email me and say that you might be interested in doing that. There is a copy of the scope, the proposed scope, on the website, and we anticipate that will take four or five meetings. There won't be any new information generated. It's reviewing the existing data to see whether or not it's worth making this. The other piece is that I'm doing some really exciting city hall tours. Some people have actually learned a lot. And so right after this meeting, if anyone wants to be up here, anybody who wants to take a look, there's just a lot of things with this building that you might want to see and get a better understanding of why a new facility is needed. So anybody who wants to come along right here, anybody who wants to be a part of that august committee, go ahead and send me an email saying you'd be a part of the August meeting. All right?
Thank you. Next, Mary Mims? More pictures?
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Mary Mims. I live at 4205 Northwest Carlton Court, Portland. I'm a native Oregonian. I do not own property in Cannon Beach, nor does any member of my family. However, I am a frequent visitor who has been coming to Cannon Beach since I was child. I love the dunes, I love the beach, and I do love the views. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address the City Council concerning management of the dune formations on the north end of the town. Okay, well, it seems to me the solution to the problem is not just degrade the dunes, but to eliminate the cause of their unnatural buildup. Dr. Sally Hacker of Oregon State, recognized expert in coastal issues, explained in her presentation that it's twofold. She said, "One, the prevailing winds have shifted over the years to a northerly direction. Two, the mistake of planting non-native grasses." Okay, we can't do anything about the wind, but we can do something about the grasses. We can adopt a sand management program and replant native grasses and allow the dunes to return to the rolling beauty they once were, and they were, weren't they? I had a thought the other day recently, and it was, anywhere else in Oregon, if you said the phrase invasive, non-native, anything, the City Council or any other governing body would be all over the problem. They would. I'm sure Cannon Beach is no exception. And the photos, I woke up one morning taking a walk, and campers were camping and relieving themselves in the dunes. They were sort of hiding between the tall peaks, and so there were two sets of them, and I thought, you know, I know this is illegal, but I've never seen signs posted out on the dunes about camping. So I called it in, and an officer came out. It took him about 45 minutes. That's the picture. And he stood there like this while they took their time and packed up. So I just thought that was kind of an interesting thing. We can't even see them unless you're walking where the deer are walking. Thank you.
Thank you. Here we go again.
I wonder if Bruce has anything else to say?
No. Actually, he was really brief that time. There's some extra. Oh, absolutely. Okay, the next person will be Judy Garing. Pass. John Garing? Pass. Luann Barrett?
Luann Barrett, Box 47, Cannon Beach. I would like to invite the mayor and the council and my pro-dune-grading neighbors to walk on Chapman Beach, be on a morning like this morning with the rain and the wind and the sand blowing in gale-force winds. Then notice the difference when you get behind the existing dunes. The difference is profound. There'll be plenty of opportunities since today is unusual, only in its timing and the season of storms, king tides are ahead of us. So I ask you all, please just take the time to notice the dunes' protection and what you would experience without it. Thank you. I'm sorry, I should have warned you.
Got a solution for that one. Okay. Carolyn Press? No? Jan? Nice to meet you. Hang on. Got to give you the right amount of time.
I need it. I could say my name and my address.
You can do that.
Jan Sebert-Wormand, P.O. Box 778, Cannon Beach.
Ready set? Go.
Dear Mayor and City Councilors, two days ago, at Janet Patrick's invitation, I met with her to walk the dunes at Breakers Point. The dunes seemed very beautiful to me, as they always have. In fact, I thought the view was spectacular. Also, the dunes actually appeared to be less steep than in some years past. As you've heard by now, in the opinions of many Cannon Beach residents and visitors, not allowing dune grading for views would be an important step for Cannon Beach to take. As evidence of this, I hope you've had a chance to see the recent ad of the local Friends of the Dunes in the Cannon Beach Gazette and the petition online, which shows much support for this approach to the dunes. Listening to the testimonies during the recent public hearings, I realized I'd like to look more closely into an issue both sides might agree with, such as trails. There's a lovely small trail Janet Patrick showed me to get to the beach, which I'd never seen before. Perhaps if more people used this trail, they'd find their way to the beach a bit more easily. I encourage you on the council to try it when you go on your site visit in October. Dune grading for views needs to be discontinued. Compassion for all people and all creatures can help us see that this is the most reasonable decision. The earth has continually suffered under our heavy-handedness. This is one small way we, as a community, can sacrifice a little for the greater good of all in the long run. In the words of Senator Gaylord Nelson, founder of Earth Day, quote, "Our goal is not just an environment of clean air and water and scenic beauty. The objective is an environment of decency, quality, and mutual respect for all other human beings and all other living creatures." End quote. Thank you.
Next up is Joanne Mahdiou. John, sorry. Pass. Thank you. Nancy Ferber? Pass. Frank Gill? Merrick Bijan?
First of all, my name is Merrick Bijan. My address is 7, P.O. Box 760, Cannon Beach. My address is P.O., Box 760, Cannon Beach. It's my first time addressing this council. And I have a, I'm not very good at speech talking, but I have something in writing, and I'll just read it to you. First of all, I want to address the Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and City Council members. I am a little bit poetic, and I've listened to the issues at hand here about the sand dunes. That's a grain of sand produced by the waves of the ocean washed to shore to make the sandy beaches of Oregon. A beautiful sight, and yet so vulnerable to a way of life and property. Incidentally, I am an owner of Breakers Point condominiums. For some 40 years, sand accumulated around Breakers Point condominium, a legal entity of City of Cannon Beach. And for the same number of years, the sand was removed to maintain liability for all condominium owners. Proper permits have always been filed with the city for approval and granted under the current sand management plan. As a condominium owner, I have observed the decline in property conditions because of sand inundations over the entire property, including streets, landscaping, roofs, and This is a result of the city delaying permits at this current time and allowing the sand dunes to get higher, with the winds blowing the sand over the top of the property. By this delay, our properties are in danger of catastrophic damage. This situation will also endangerous homes that are located nearby. I cannot phantom that this beautiful city of Cannon Beach would allow property conditions to go down for the entire neighborhoods, affecting our way of life and living conditions. I'm concerned for all our neighbors and citizens of Cannon Beach. I think we should, I think the city should allow the sand removal as soon as possible. Consider allowing sand removal under the five-year permit, which would result in cost savings to the city, and allow the 35-feet boundary maintenance removal. I'm totally opposed to the new sand management plan that does not control the accumulation and inundation of sand and property at Cannon Beach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Douglas Hadley. My mailing address, P.O., Box 432. My living address, 398 West 7th Street at the north end, where we've owned property for, since the year 2000. I'm a resident, a voter, and a taxpayer. First of all, I want to thank you for all your work and for the way you've arranged for hearings and testimony and the exchange of information. And I want to also thank my neighbors of whatever bias for coming forth. This is how democracy has got to work. We've got to speak up. Thank you. I just want to speak about two considerations, although I could speak about many more. I am a preacher, after all. But Eastern Orthodox, not Baptist. First of all, I want to talk about stewardship, which I think has been mentioned twice, stewardship of creation. We're called to be stewards of creation. We're not called to rearrange it for our own personal or aesthetic preferences, or for property values, for that matter. That doesn't mean those aren't considerations. They are, they were posted before, and they're in your reports, that land value is a consideration, but it's not the only one. We're called, among other things in my past life, I've been a teacher of world religions at a state university, a state college. And so, I've had a chance to look at all different kinds of religious traditions. And without exception, except maybe some Buddhists and some Hindus, all the world major religions honor and believe we are called to be stewards of creation, that it was here before we were. It's our home, not our convenience. Second of all, I want to talk about language. I noticed, again, the picture that was up there of the dump trucks and the loaders. And I remembered, as I, when I saw it the other day, I remembered too, when I was in grad school one summer, I worked for a heavy construction company. One of our jobs was to put a road down a hill along a slanted angle. And to do that, we had to move thousands of yards of earth. And the job that I was hired for was not grading. First of all, it was excavation. We use the word grading. It's in the statute, as a matter of fact. But grading is such a gentle term. I mean, I think of somebody taking a rake in their Buddhist garden and smoothing it out a little bit. Grading has a wide range of meanings, but I think, as we consider grading the sand dunes, we've got to remember, first, there's going to be heavy-duty excavation. One of the pieces of equipment we worked with that summer was a D8 Caterpillar, and it could pick up 13 and 1/2 yards of dirt. And sometimes it would drive it down the hill and dump it. Sometimes it would put it into a 10-yard pickup truck, which would overfill, and it would drive down. We spent a long time moving dirt that way. But it wasn't, we didn't call that grading. That was excavation and earthmoving. When all of that was done, then we brought out the road grader.
Sorry, Douglas.
The grading happened then. So, just be aware that grading is a bigger, not a big enough term for what's going to happen.
Rex?
Well, no.
No?
It was a dark and stormy morning as we headed up Breakers Point to the beach. And even though we were going through those lights that violate the dark sky ordinance at Breakers Point, we still liked seeing the rain come through and the wind blow, and I felt all of my 84 years at that moment. And then, when we launched onto the beach and the first wind hit us, I felt 94. But having said that, we watched Luann come down. She headed south into the wind, all 20 or 25 miles of it, with her dogs. And I thought, man, she's something. And she, and only that, she is, she cleans the beach, and she takes care of the beach, and she sees, we all take care of the campers. So many mentioned about campers and the dunes. We've been doing that for 20 years, you know? And we try to keep that beach clean, and we keep the dunes clean, and we keep Breakers Point clean when we go up there and things are blown around. At any rate, the last meeting, Bruce used the word invasive to include Japanese knot-weed Scotch broom and European beech grass. I cautioned the term invasive to be used for European beech grass. It was planted with a purpose, beginning in the 1900s, to protect from coastline erosion. It has done a fine job. Bruce then asked, "How high do you want a dune to be?" Well, he asked many people, but he never asked me. I would say that dune should be as high as nature makes it. Our dunes are becoming self-organizing living entities. Let's leave them alone and watch life emerge from this natural, creative process. And there's been some misunderstanding, I think, between the Breakers Point people about, among the Breakers Point people, about how those of us who don't want dune grating for views feel about them. And this came up in, Bob, excuse me for mentioning you, but Bob Lindy misrepresented us in a letter to you, to the Council. And he then wrote a mea culpa. And I want to just read Bob for, and again, I love you, brother. He said, this was after Mike gave you Bob's letter at the last meeting. He only read the last part of that. But if he'd read the first part, he would have said that Bob felt that we didn't, well, here's what he said. And here is his book.
Rex, I'm sorry, we're going to have to read it ourselves.
Okay.
So...
Well, we've got the, we've got your response, I think, so.
Diane Amos?
Left.
Diane left. Robbie Dodd?
Always. Always.
Okay. John Rippe?
John Rippe, P.O., Box 655, Cannon Beach, Oregon. And I do believe that I can safely say I've spent more time on that beach than anybody else in this room. In nigh on to 30 years as being a lifeguard here, I've observed quite a bit. And I want to address, I mean, I find there is so much objectionable about the dune grating that I could spend 30 minutes instead of three minutes. But I want to address a couple of issues that I think kind of got slid by. One of, well, a kind of specious altruism. The first is the safety issue, which was addressed earlier. And I went to the police department, and they said, in seven years, they had never had an issue with safety in the dunes. I looked back on my notes, and in nigh on to 30 years, never saw any injuries or anything to do with the dunes. You know, I think, you know, I've never seen Jack and Jill and their little corgi spot being thrown into a, you know, quicksand chasm in the dunes. It just doesn't happen. I've never had to deal with an injury, as far as that goes. The other thing is access. And there was, you know, oh, well, we'll have handicapped access. Well, been there, done that already. There are three reasons for vehicles on the beach here, with three and a half. The half is, once a year, every year, vehicles can come on Sandcastle Day. The other reasons are emergency vehicles, lifeguards, fire, and, lifeguards, fire, and the police. The second reason is somewhat of a moot point right now, which is the trucks that bring down fishing boats. And that, when I started lifeguarding, there were like 25 dory boat launchers, and that was that. But now, there's not hardly any. The last reason for a vehicle on the beach is handicapped access. You could drive a Greyhound bus.
Thanks, John. Rita Karub?
No.
Karub, no?
Sorry. Karen Hadley. I live at 398 7th Street at the corner of 7th and Ash, just at the bottom of the dunes by Chapman Point. And I am a member of the Friends of the Dune and speaking against dune grating or bulldozing for views. My experience, my husband Doug and I love to walk on the north beach, and we try to do so every day that I am not working. We find it therapeutic and healing to body and soul, listening to the waves, smelling the ocean, the sweeping views of ocean dunes and mountains. All of it is restorative. We bought our home for these reasons and have enjoyed this for 19 years. We do not want to have the beauty of our walks destroyed by having to look at bulldozed dunes. I want to echo what Dale Hints said on Saturday evening, quote, "The dunes are as much a part of the beach as the ocean is." And what I think Frank said about aesthetics, the dunes are beautiful in our eyes, and we do not want to see them bulldozed. And I want to disagree with an earlier gentleman, that everyone comes to Cannon Beach just for access and just to look at haystack rock. That is not, in fact, that is not a fact. I don't think we have polled the visitors of Cannon Beach. I know many people come here to see the dunes and to walk in the dunes and to walk on the beach. I want to state the obvious to me. The issue is not the grasses, which you've heard is only 10% of the problem. And if you choose European beech grass, you have taller dunes that block your view. And if you choose American beech grass, you are inundated by sand. So, pick your poison. Nor is it access. That is not a right, there is not a right to access. Nor is it safety. No place on earth guarantees you safety. There are hurricanes, or tornadoes, or flash floods, or flooding, or wildfires, or landslides, et cetera, pretty much wherever you decide to live. Nor is it snowy plovers, which we have already decided we are, we will not be successfully, will not be successfully brought back to our beaches for numerous reasons, including the number of people and dogs. The real problem is that people choose or chose to build on the dunes, and with the expectation that nothing would change. Oceanfront homeowners ought to have known what was obvious on the face of things by plain observation and history, that the north dunes will continue to do what they have done for many years, which is to continue to grow. Just as the person who chooses to build on the edge of a receding cliff cannot expect the cliff to stop receding simply because they built there, as much as a person, as much as a person may want to hope nature will...
Thank you, Karen.
Okay.
Time's up.
Good evening. I'm impressed you guys are here again. I decided to skip a few of these, to be honest with you.
We have to be honest.
Are we allowed to ask you questions? My name's Mike Manzulli, P.O., Box 650, Tolavana Park.
We're just visiting right now.
Okay. So, Goal 18 is about conserving and protecting Oregon's...
I'm sorry, I still need your address, just for calling.
Oh, I thought I did. Mike Manzulli, P.O., Box 650, Tolavana.
Thank you.
Goal 18 is about conserving and protecting Oregon's beaches and dune resources. Goal 18 is not about beach access. This is a topic for another hearing. However, dune grating proponents, the last time I was here, continued to reference access in the beach bill, so I felt the need to clarify a little bit. The beach bill promises free and uninterrupted use of Oregon's ocean shores. This legendary legislation was a response to the threat of the privatization of the beaches. The beach bill's intent is not to remove obstacles from the coast to allow physical access through rugged terrain. So long as there's no fences, no barricades, no gates, no fees charged, no buildings blocking the public's way to reach a beach, the public has the free and uninterrupted use the beach bill was passed to protect. You can always walk from the north, you can always walk from the south, as long as you can get to that beach below the dunes. That's what the Oregon Beach Bill protected. There is no duty for the city of Cannon Beach to tame the wind, the sand, and make the beach easier to reach. Let's protect our community from king tides, storm changes, storm surges, climate change. Please vote no on dune grading for views. Let's keep our dunes wild and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a minute. Our last on the list is Sean Lemunyon. Sean? Okay. We'll make that a pass until. And as we have done in the previous episodes, I'll go back through those folks who have passed. And if you would like to now speak, you may. Bruce?
Bruce Francis, P.O. Box 246, Cannon Beach.
Hang on a sec, Bruce. Kind of short last time.
I don't have too much to say.
I didn't think you'd get up here so fast. I mean.
Yeah. I'm pretty spry for an old guy.
There we go. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. A preceding testimony, a common statement, has been that the privileged 5% should not be able to pressure the council to grade the dunes. It is a fact that 97% of accretion in Cannon Beach is impacting the privileged 5%. It appears that such a small respectful group, trying to work with the city on a plan of resolution, is being overrun by a vocal group claiming to represent the majority on this matter with nothing more than emotional rhetoric. What would the town look like if dunes were in front of downtown or Mo's Restaurant, the Stephanie Inn, or any other beachfront hotel? The impact to business and the city would trigger immediate calls to council to resolve the situation. I ask how many of our opponents would tolerate the dumping of 10 double dump truck loads of sand a day in front of their properties? We have to endure this every day and we've done it for more than 20 years. We are in the incorporated part of Cannon Beach and as neighbors, request that the city give us the means to control the impact of sand upon our homes so as that we can join the rest of the town that does not have to endure this. Please pass the sand management plan. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, with that, I'm going to take a short break. Does, we need, pardon?
The last person that you called that wasn't here is here. He was just.
Okay. Okay. Uh, hang on. Sean?
Yeah, Sean Lemunyon. Sorry, I'll keep it short and sweet. I have my kid out there.
Just a minute, Sean. I gotta wait till this runs down.
Okay.
We can give you the amount of time you need.
All right, it won't be that long. Sean Lemunyon. Mailing or physical? P.O. Box 42, Cannon Beach.
If you're going to be short, go ahead.
Okay. I'd just like to say, my wife couldn't be here. Her name's Sarah McAllister. My son's out there. We strongly oppose any grading for views and would like to keep the beaches wild as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's a record. That was 17, 17.
Only has a kid out there crying.
Yeah. Okay, let me go back to the beginning of the list. No, actually, I still need to take a break. Sorry. We'll do five minutes. I'm going to run through those folks who passed earlier. Libby Gast? No? Frank?
Our picture.
Good evening. My name is Frank Patrick and I live at 255 Northwest Torrevue Drive, Portland, Oregon. And I was very glad to see that Mr. Manzulli didn't escape because I had to say to everybody else, Mike, that I had to apologize to you because I think I found the path that you went down when you said you went down with your three kids or two kids to play on the dunes. Is that the path that you went down?
They're all different.
No, in fact, it didn't exist. I understand that it just was regraded or graded this summer. Oh, really? Okay, well, it's, it's a park, apparently, maintained by the U.S. Parks Service. Did you show that? Okay, doesn't matter. Anyhow, that's the first picture that I gave you there. That's the, that's the path that Mr. Manzulli indicated he went down. It is a lovely path and I'm going to see if we can get a couple of those paths reinstituted over the three access points that we, we have that go out over the dunes onto the front. It's a U.S., apparently, U.S. Parks maintained item. The second thing there is the same thing, only it goes all the way down. It's, it's, the grade is great and I recommend anybody who's older than 35 to use that path. It's, it's hard surface and fantastic. It does, however, have a fence to one side. That's the, one of the third pictures there. I suspect that that's a fence that's been there for many, many years and probably someday should come down, but it's in violation of the Oregon Beach Bill. And then, of course, here is the sand that's incredibly beautiful. But the real point of these pictures is to show what happens when you don't have any grading and the unrestrained growth of dune grass. This is looking from that path to the north and this is the, the dunes that arise. And they're clearly impassible. I mean, you could go through them, I guess, on foot if you wanted to, but Robin, let's do it hand and go because I'm going to tell you, it's going to be a difficult one for either one of us to get back. Point of these pictures is this, is that unrestrained or barred grading will result in the growth of dunes that will make Cannon Beach no longer Cannon Beach. It will become Cannon Dune. And that's really what I think this is all about. And if you look at it, I think one of the people yesterday said, "This is all about money." Those people at Cannon Beach, Breaker's Point, they just want to get more money out of the sales of the units. It's not all about money at all. It's about the fact that every year we have to clean out our gutters twice because the sand that gets airborne over the Fordune and goes over our homes, comes down, and then goes all the way up to Chapman Point. There's no question about it. Is a problem. The whole point of, of dune management was to avoid that problem. I want to point out this last thing. You can't let a small minority say, "We don't want that they have what they have." Okay? Thank you very much. In the second set of pictures, you can.
I don't know why, when you speak, this thing goes faster, but it.
You know, I've been watching you very carefully and I notice how you tap it sometimes.
There's a bunch of sand that collects and sticks to the top. I want you to get every grain.
I am almost certain that you can't make that thing go faster by tapping it.
No. I'm trying to get all of them.
Thank you very much.
Judy Garing? John Garing? No? Nancy Ferber? Frank Gill? Robbie Dodd? Irida? Oh, Robbie? Okay, Robbie's coming up.
Hi, Robbie Dodd, P.O. Box 427, Cannon Beach. I'm a full-time president of Cannon Beach. I wasn't going to speak, but I do have a number of materials just to present. There was a comment made yesterday by one of the representatives that, that U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Parks, Oregon Dunes, a number of organizations are against the, or they're for European beech grass. We won't go through all of that. I'll just leave the documents. There've been a number of comments that have been kind of opposing dune grading. And I think that the Fordune Management Plan that's being proposed addresses those. So I'm not sure if they've read that or not, but on the adequate storm protection and climate crisis, I know that through the goals one and two, the minimum elevation FEMA requirements are there. And because we, you know, do believe in science, we are also looking at climate change and the effects of that. And I think that's important. I think that's something that we all can agree on. U.S. Fish and Wildlife, I've included a report here that they talk about removing European beech grass and restoring the native plants and the American grass to provide a wider, broader, and more sturdy. We talked, one of the, the oppositions was to the sandblowing inland and agree as well. The goal number five addresses that from the immediate planning after grading and the timing of grading. The ugly dunes after grading, we all kind of agree on those things. Contouring the dunes, making sure that there is the natural peaks and valleys when we replant the grass immediately. We talked about killing, you know, killing the clams and I was corrected, I did bring the statement that the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife says that 95% of all the razor clams are on the 18-mile beach north of Tillmook Head. So I brought a printout for that. And I was corrected, Mr. Manzulli did tell me there is a secret clam bed in Cannon Beach that may be Crescent Beach, but we'll just make sure we map those so that we don't destroy those. And there's also been a concern that grading the dunes destroys wildlife. And I think a lot of the research and reports have indicated that by grading and planting the, the American beech grass and the American beech dunes, you know, can restore and be more diverse. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, the researchers believe that one of the biggest issues facing the West Coast today is the spread of the non-native grass vays. It creates a monoculture and the populations of native plants and vertebrates, mammals, birds all suffer, they said. And I think Mr. Harrison was right in looking at, it's really in the context of where we live. And we certainly live in it within the urban growth boundary. And although the dunes are, they look natural, again, they are a man-made structure. They were built as a purpose. And, you know, right or wrong, we need to learn from our past mistakes or successes. It will continue to, to improve. And where the one grass may have worked, doing nothing doesn't work either. And we'll continue to have to manage that. And all of the management of the dunes started when we developed the West Coast. And I'd like to consider that. I would love to be able to walk.
Thanks, Robbie.
Okay, thank you.
Irida? Did you want to say anything? No? And that is everybody. So any questions from the council? No? Saving those for later. Staff, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, so this is, you know, the last of the sort of open public forums. There's going to be the close of the written record October 1st. So we should have all written material and testimony coming in. And then October 7th, there's going to be the final sort of wrap-up with deliberations after. Staff is planning to put together another staff report, you know, and we want to do what, what you need the most. And so, you know, to the extent you can provide us with any ideas about how to organize that or what information you'd like to have in that, that would be helpful to, to staff as they prepare this. You don't necessarily have to say it now, but as you sort of noodle on it and contact Jeff or Denise and say, you know, "We heard those 10 issues and we'd love to have the staff report laid out by the issues." Or, you know, "I really want to go through the documents and make the document approach." Or something else, you know, or, so the more you can provide that information to us, the way you're looking at it, the more we can help you get to what hopefully is the best, best decision, help you make that decision with the information you need.
Okay. Hopefully, we try to get them something before the first ourselves, correct?
And the staff report should come out a week ahead of time. So, you know, it's sort of in the next, next week or so would be ideal. What is today, the 17th? So, yeah, by the 24th or so, then Jeff would have a week to hopefully pull things together. You know, he's seen it enough that it should be pretty straight, you know, that the universe, he, he should have the universe of issues contained, so.
Okay. Bruce?
Yeah, and Bill, do we want to talk about the, what parameters they want to use for the.
Yes. So the, the other part is the, the dune tour on, on the 3rd.
7th.
7th, God, sorry. On the 7th. And so the idea is to meet on, at 3 o'clock, I believe, is, is the time?
Yes, I believe. I don't know if we've set a location. I guess it would be here.
Okay. Yeah, and so, um, meet here and would we provide the transportation for the, the council or the council would?
Somehow we would get everybody there.
So we, we would get everybody there, announce to the public where, you know, the tour would start. Generally, in a site visit, again, if you're doing a quadri judicial, we'd say, "Don't talk to anybody. Come back and ask questions when you're, when you're done." However, it is legislative. You could have discussions out there, but then it also becomes a question of access and who you're talking to. And so it may be better to sort of approach this visit as something like that where you go out and see what you see and come back and ask questions and talk about what you have. But, you know, this is really your call as to how you want to handle that, that visit.
One of the things I've done in the past is when we've had a site visit, which has been really rare, we always directed our questions to staff. So even if I needed to ask Mike something, I would ask Bruce and Bruce would ask Mike. And that way we all were aware of it. It's just like we do with emails and stuff.
And that.
It's awkward, but it works.
What it does is make sure everybody has the same information.
Right.
I have two questions for you together after the tour. And we're all talking about it. Is that a public meeting or in violation of?
So there is a provision that specifically talks about site visits as not being considered a public meeting. So, you know, the, we could try to record or take notes as you're out there, again, to make sure everybody's on, on the same page. But we, you know, in terms of when you come back, absolutely, it's public meeting. On the site visit, you have a little more freedom.
I think one of the questions is for you to decide now is, I guess there's an assumption that you all will come together so that whatever site or whatever feature you're looking at, everybody's seeing the same thing. The question is whether or not you want to allow anybody to come up and talk or is it just similar to what we did on the first night where it's a discussion between council, staff, and consultants that we're just kind of doing this tour of sites or features that you've decided to look at? You need to, we don't want to have to sort that out that we've got somebody peeling off and then three people are talking to three counselors or whatever. It's how do you want to handle that so we can say this is the rules?
I guess, I feel like we've had hours and hours of public hearing where we heard the views of individuals many times. I prefer not to be lobbied during the site tour. Merely to point out whatever you'd like for us to see in case we might miss them without having dialogue going back and forth. We're there to look at it and when we come back here.
Then when you come back, there is an opportunity for people to speak to what you said.
And, and so in terms of direct pointing things out, maybe you or Jeff can accompany them if there are particular features people want to see, they can submit them to, to you.
Right. Do you want us to select typical locations or is there any particular locations you'd want to say, "I want to make sure I see?"
I think clearly the trail, it sounds like something that we all need to see together. How far we go on it depends. The, well, both acts, both of the main access points from there. Myself, I'd like to go, and I can do this on my own, but I'd like to go down on the beach and look up, just to see it from the bottom, the toe of the dune, and then also seeing it from the top side, so.
Does everybody want to do that on the 7th? Go down to the bottom and back up?
I do it every day.
One thing is, one thing is that out of the five of us, four of us have been on, either lived now or have lived on the, on the north side, so we're pretty familiar with that area.
Okay.
And, and so in terms of direct pointing things out, maybe you or Jeff can accompany them of their particular features people want to see, they can submit them to, to you.
Right. Do you want us to select typical locations, or is there any particular locations you'd want to say, "I want to make sure I see them"?
I think clearly the trail, it sounds like something that we all need to see together. How far we go on it depends. The, well, both acts, both of the main access points from there. Myself, I'd like to go, and I can do this on my own, but I'd like to go down on the beach and look up, just to see it from the bottom, the toe of the dune, and then also seeing it from the top side, so.
Does everybody want to do that on the 7th? Go down to the bottom and back up?
Do it every day.
One thing is-
But sure.
One thing is that out of the five of us, four of us have been on, either lived now or have lived on the, on the north side, so we're pretty familiar with that area.
Okay. It's, however, whatever you, we want to provide anything that you want. If you don't feel a need for that, it's, as the mayor says, you can go and do it on your own. We don't have to include it on the 7th. So we want to, as far as going all the way down to the beach and the peak of the dunes, that sort of thing, do on your own?
If that's a, just in on my own, it's all done.
Yeah, I can do that. That's fine.
Okay. And then we're kind of focusing on Breaker's Point. We're also talking about the presidential's. Do you want to see just a typical, maybe staff pick out a typical location at the presidential's or possibly the highest dune?
Well, I think it'd be helpful. We could load it. Testimony about walking along.
Ocean? Sure.
Just walking along that. And then there are, there is two dune grading permitting areas, just to point those out, you know, by-
Where the boundaries are.
Yeah. We know from this street to that street, in the past, this has been done, and it could be done again. I think that'd be helpful to see that from the street and then to walk down on the beach and see.
All right. So we'll just pick a location there?
I think with what Mike is saying is to point out the fact that between First and Washington has been remedial but never been planted. That's one, one section that's not had the dune grading. And then also down between Harrison and Van Buren, that area has never been graded, and it's a totally different feel. So there's three sections there that show very different, almost perfect test zones. And so, just to point those out.
Okay, Sam, I think I got two. First in Washington, Harrison and Van Buren. What was your third?
The third is the middle section, which has all been graded, or parts of it are dramatically been graded.
They're in the plan showing what those-
Okay.
...three areas are.
All right. So that's three locations, okay?
I kind of like to see something of Breaker's Point itself. I mean, the condos there. If there's a, I mean, we are looking at grading for the views, so maybe we should see what it's like in a condo if we can find, if we can, somebody will open up their condo to see what that looks like or what that feels like.
Do we want to go into a condo or just be on the first floor level?
Well, if we could go in, that would be-
We'll see if we can arrange it. We'll talk to Breaker's Point and-
They've invited us in the past.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No?
All right, so we'll meet here, three. We will go and look at the inside of a condo at Breaker's, if we can arrange it. Trail, there's also two other main access points. And then the bottom and the top of the dune, Joe, will take care of on your own. And then we'll take a stroll on Ocean when we go where the presidential's. We want to look at the areas that are permitted. And, and then also First in Washington, Harrison and Van Buren, which has never been graded, in the middle, which includes the graded sections.
What about the access at Lishur? Seems like that's a flat level access to get there to the beach. It's been mentioned a couple of times in testimony. I think it'd be, I think it's been pointed out as an alternative access point if we're struggling with the dunes.
Yeah. Yeah, we can go see that.
Kind of covered, I think, the areas we've all talked about.
All right.
Now, just as a question for the council, does anybody think it'd be worth going down to Tolavana and looking at places where there are no dunes? No? We can do that on our own.
Yeah, I think that's a different discussion unless we're talking about more of them.
Okay, then. I want to thank everybody for coming and talking. Again, there will be one last chance, but I would ask people that have spoken quite a bit and not to repeat themselves. And if you have something really new and urgent, fine, but we're going to want to start to deliberate, I think. And it might be more than our talking for one night. We might get to talk for four nights, so. There we go. Thank you very much. I will close.
If I, if I can. We have a meeting on the 7th.
7th.
And then we set aside time on the workshop at the 8th for further deliberation because we'll probably be working through trying to put out an agenda in there. Do you want us to at least put it on deliberation as a placeholder?
Might have.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing. No, I'm not closing the public hearing. We're-
Continuing.
We will continue the public hearing, but I'm closing tonight's meeting. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.